That was very good, Lynda.
Good evening, everyone. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided through the posting, mailing, and filing of the annual notice of regularly scheduled meetings of the Town Council on December 11th, 2020. The notice was on that date, posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building, published, or provided to the Westfield leader and the Star Ledger, and filed with the clerk of the town of Westfield. Mrs. Riley, may I have a roll call?
Mayor Brindle, council members Havegood.
Here.
Harmley.
Here.
LaGrippo.
Here.
Katz.
Here.
Mackey.
Here.
Contract.
Here.
Dartia.
Here.
And Boys.
Thank you. Please rise for the invocation, which will be given by Councilman Katz, and then remain standing for the salute to the flag.
We gather to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. A couple of quick updates. So, leaf collection started last week. We are in our second week this week, and they are moving along as per the schedule that was listed in the brochure. So, they're finishing up Zones 3 and 7 this week. Next week, they'll be in Zones 4, 8, and the first half of 9. And then the last week, the full week after, they'll finish up the first pass, as we normally have done. Again, a reminder, we merely are listing the zones each week that we're going to so people know when to get their leaves in the street the week before. And we're trying to limit the amount of time leaves in the street. Reminder that no branches, pumpkins, hay bales, or mums in the leaf piles. That contaminates the leaf piles when you bring them to the county. So, again, that'll be helpful. And again, there are free leaf bags still available at the Conservation Center. So, if you choose to bag your leaves, we appreciate that, and we will give you free leaf bags to do that if you come to the center. Also, just a reminder, fourth quarter taxes. Of course, thank you, everybody who's paid their taxes. Drop them off here at our office in the Dropbox. The 10-day grace period ends tomorrow for the fourth quarter. Again, we're having another good collection for the fourth quarter, so thank you to the residents of this town for usually paying their taxes on time. So, that's very much appreciated. And lastly, just a reminder or update tonight, on the agenda tonight, we have the award of recycling contract. You remember last year, we were here, we were in a process where we went out to bid twice, and we received no bids for a contractor to do a dual hauling and disposal for recycling. And we had to negotiate in late December, mid-December, to create a new program, which was a separated program, a separate hauler, a separate disposal site, new collection schedule, new brochure, lots of new things. So, we're now finishing up our first year of that program. On the whole, it's worked well. We had some hiccups along the way, which we've been addressing with the company. We did go out to bid again, and we received one bid for the hauling separately and one R.I.P. response on the disposal site. Good news is, the hauling costs are slightly less than they would be this year, and we're able to lock that price in for three years. On the disposal site, we actually have about a $30,000 savings year over year on disposal. And so, that's a positive thing. It's the first time we're going to have savings in recycling in the, in many, many years, actually, even though the numbers have increased over the years. And we're looking forward to having the vendor that we're awarding to provide a little more resources to the program so we can actually improve some of the response from this past year. So, this provides us budget certainty for the next three years. And just overall, to give people, you know, some context about volumes of recycling we collect. So, off the street, in a given year, we're collecting anywhere between 3,200 to 3,600 tons of single-stream recycling. And that's very significant. We do a lot of recycling in this town, and the street program does a phenomenal job, and that is being brought to the third-party disposal site. In the center, again, as you all know, we have a very robust recycling program at our center. That is a separated program, and we do about, maybe a little less than 100 tons a year out of the center. And we haul that to a disposal site on our own. So, again, on an annual basis, we are really collecting significant tonnage on recycling in this town, and a lot of that comes from our center. Just under 100 tons of material sounds like a small number compared to the on-street, but it's actually a very large number compared to other communities that do their own center. As you know, we have a lot of different cycling materials that come out of there, and just a wonderful program we have there. I want to thank Public Works, Greg O'Neil, Rich Eubanks particularly, just running the program there and doing a great job. So, some of the things for tonight. And lastly, on the agenda too, we have two resolutions tonight, doing some awarding of contracts for work in this room that we stand in tonight for some technical upgrades. We're excited to get that process started. I want to thank Scott Katz and Technical Advisory Council for all the time they spend with us over the past year, working with our architect design firm to work on new equipment to be added to this room, electrical upgrades, and ultimately aesthetic upgrades as well. So, during 2022, we'll have a nice new opportunity here for not just the Town Council, but the court, the Planning Board, the Board of Adjustment, the Store Preservation Commission, other groups that use this room to use some enhanced technology here, which would be great. So, thank you. Acting Mayor.
Thank you very much, Jim. And good evening, everyone. Thanks to all who are here in person this evening and to those who are joining online. I'll be presiding over tonight's meeting as Mayor Brindle is unable to join us. And on behalf of the mayor and councilpersons Dartia, Contract, Mackey, and myself, I'd like to thank the community for your vote of confidence and the privilege that we now have to serve Westfield for another four years. We are very enthusiastic about the opportunities that lie ahead, and we're very eager to work with you to build on the foundation that we've established. As a reminder, public comment will be accepted in person only tonight, and as always, a replay of this meeting will be available afterwards on Facebook, YouTube, and TV36. Volunteer applications are now available on the website. We have openings on many of our boards, commissions, and the mayor's advisory councils, and we encourage everyone, as we always have, to get involved. This is the fifth time that we're opening this up to the public, so please take some time to take a look. We're grateful for the dedication and talent of the residents who step up to benefit the community. And applications are open through November 29th only at westfieldnj.gov/volunteer. As the mayor reiterated in her weekly update last Friday, public safety is the absolute priority of this administration, and we're all very grateful to the residents who have reached out to us expressing concern over recent acts of criminal activity. While the data shows that most types of crime are down in 2021 in Westfield, that does not dismiss the reality that recent, more violent acts reflect that criminals are feeling emboldened, and it's very disturbing and incredibly frightening for our residents. We share these concerns, and we're working to be on hand to share details about, hang on, closely, and we're working closely and regularly with the police department on additional mitigation efforts. This morning, Mayor Brindle met with Chief Badaloro, Town Administrator Jim Gildea, and Councilman Dartia, who chairs the Public Safety, Transportation, and Parking Committee as part of their ongoing efforts to discuss ongoing police activity. This included an updated look at regional crime trends and public policy, as well as an evaluation of our current police resources and NICSAL Alert policies. You have heard and seen reminders about securing your property as part of our community efforts to deter crime, but this is clearly not and never has been our exclusive area of focus. We are always working on updates, and now we are working on a three-pronged approach centered on emphasizing police reform at the state level, securing additional resources needed by the police department, and implementing a more streamlined communication strategy, all of which need to work in tandem to meet the shared goal of reducing crime and improving public safety for our community. You can expect to hear more about these efforts in the coming weeks and months as we ensure that all available resources are being properly utilized to address this issue. Veterans Day is this coming Thursday, so please join us at 11:00 a.m. at Monument Circle for the annual Veterans Day ceremony. Thank you to Alan Batow and Randy Grizzard of the Martin Wahlberg American Legion Post 3 for organizing this important event where the community can come together to recognize our veterans and their tremendous service to our community. As a reminder, Town Hall will be closed on Veterans Day. If you're starting to think about the holiday season, please join Mayor Brindle on Facebook Live tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. for another Town Talk hosted by Westfield resident Les Trent. Executive Director for the Downtown Westfield Corporation, Bob Zuckerman, will be on hand to share details about the holiday festivities that are planned for downtown this year. In addition, the mayor will also discuss the administration's priorities for the next four years and any other topics that are on your mind. You can submit questions on the live feed or in advance at towntalk@westfieldnj.gov. Also on Facebook Live, don't miss next week's panel discussion hosted by Streetworks. It's entitled "Offices: It's Time to Get Back to Work." Mayor Brindle will be joined by Westfield resident, workplace futurist, and founder of Sway Workplace Denise Browder, renowned architect Michael Green, planner Phil Abramson of Topology, and Christian Michelle and Richard Heeps of Streetworks Development. The conversation will include information on local office trends, new live workplaces, the impact of green initiatives in the workspaces, and the opportunities for post-pandemic office development here in Westfield. Questions can be submitted through our website or in the live feed for that livestream as well. And we have several items on the agenda tonight, as Jim mentioned. Most notably, we'll be voting on a resolution to award a contract for the curbside recycling collection to Grand Sanitation, providing us with lower increase than we've seen in recent years, and as well as a consistent price point for the next three years in our budgetary process, which is a nice advantage for us. But before we get to the agenda, I'll turn the meeting over to Councilman Contract for the presentation of the Adopt a Drain Awards to recognize resident participants in various categories, helping to grow the success of our Adopt a Drain program. And as a reminder, before I close these statements, we'll be enforcing Robert's rules this evening to ensure that we stay on topic and that meeting runs efficiently. Thank you.
Thanks, Acting Mayor. I want to introduce Lois Kraus from the Green Team. She's one of the co-chairs and also really spearheaded this Adopt a Drain program, which was driven by the Public Works Committee, really to help the DPW take care of our storm drains. Lois is going to go into more detail. And then we're proud to announce the first-ever Adopt a Drain Award. Hello, Lois.
So, it's been a great first year as our kickoff for Adopt a Drain. As a reminder, this was a program that initiated in Minnesota and has since moved to multiple locations in New Jersey, including, most recently, Berkeley Heights has adopted the program as well, but it's in Massachusetts and Washington State now. So, on behalf of the Westfield Green Team, we want to thank each of the residents who helped make our first year successful. We attracted 155 individual volunteers who have adopted now 227 drains. That represents 8% of our entire drains in the community, and it really supplements the work that's done by our DPW with the street cleaning, because they can, with the two sweepers, they can get to the drains, but not every day. So, we have people who are looking at them locally. We've removed 933 pounds of organic and inorganic debris, and we've received statewide recognition through Sustainable Jersey as the first community on the East Coast to implement this program. So, here are the award winners.
All right. So, the first award, and I don't know, if you're present, just come on up, and if not, then we'll mail you this beautiful certificate. So, the first, the first person to adopt a drain was Helen Pritchard on June 9th, 2020. So, congratulations, Helen. All right. The last person, or the most recent person to adopt a drain on July 14th is Mary Jo Laban.
Mary Jo.
Oh, Mary Jo, sorry. Mary Jo Laban.
That's my neighbor, so I.
Oh, perfect. Awesome. And by the way, we are still looking for more people to adopt drains. Lois talked about it, but the reality is that Westfield has nearly 3,000 storm drains. So, we send street sweepers out twice a year. It takes six weeks approximately, or longer, to sweep every street. So, at most, streets can be swept six to eight times. So, this Adopt a Drain program is designed to help, you know, fill the gap, right? Because your sewer drain can clog really easily, one rainstorm, you know, or one windstorm. And you probably look at your drain on your street, it's probably clogged with all the leaves in the street. So, we're really encouraging residents to help the town out. It actually helps you out, too, because it minimizes the risk of flooding on your street. So, we really are appreciative of who's joined. So, continuing on with the awards.
So, most loved cleanings and most debris collected, we want to make a big, big shout out to Jane Wigelmo. She has reported 47 cleanings of 139 pounds. So, that's quite impressive.
Come on up. Oh, and I am not prepared, so I need to find your certificates.
That's amazing. Do you report all of them?
Uh, yeah, I have four.
Good.
There we go.
Thank you.
So, Jane is a high school junior, also on our state semifinalists, right? Soccer team? And Jane, you need to encourage more high school students to join the cause.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Justin Scalia was the runner-up with 19 reported cleanings of 60 pounds. For individuals with most adoptions, Sarah Hedgepath has five drains that she's adopted, and they, interestingly, all have Shakespeare names.
Awesome. And probably the best category, which, at least from my perspective, are the top names. So, not only do you get to adopt a drain, you get to name it. So, the Green Team picked these winners, so if you don't like them, you can blame the Green Team. So, I think the top name was LeBron Drains. Kurt, Kirsten, and Catalina, who's here?
Very, very cute.
I have to find her. Do the next one.
The second most, the name that was voted by Green Team, the second most liked, was Keanu Leaves by Ryan Tedeo.
The next one is "This Drain Is Great," from Kate Farinetta.
And finally, the best picture that was submitted to the Westfield Green Team. Oh. Oh, yes, he's here.
Oh, he's, okay, got it.
The best picture submitted to Westfield Green Team, who also had another great name, was Stormy Drainals by David Brunt.
Awesome. Well, thanks, everybody, just on behalf of the Public Works Committee and the Green Team. It's a wonderful program. It's really nice to see residents pitching in and helping out, and we do encourage the whole community to join, and you'll have a chance to win an award next year. Thanks, Lois.
Thank you, everybody.
Very nice. Congratulations to all the winners. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the Town Council Conference and regular meetings of October 26, 2021? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Mrs. Riley, do we have any petitions or communications tonight?
No, Acting Mayor.
Okay. So, now it's time for open discussion by citizens. Anyone may come up to the microphone and speak to the council on any subject on which the council has jurisdiction. Please state your name and address at the start, and limit your comments to 10 seconds. To 10 minutes. That was a slip. And I will also just remind everyone that the protocol that we utilize is for people to make comments. We'll listen to all comments of all residents tonight, and then we will address them at the end. Thank you.
That's funny.
My name is Rosemary Millett. I reside at 1020 Oak Lane, Plainfield, New Jersey. I have been a 29-year resident of Westfield. I served on the Westfield Planning Board, appointed by former mayor Tom Jardim, and I am a member, trustee on the Westfield Senior Citizens Housing Board of Trustees, currently serving as Buildings and Grounds Chair. I'd like to focus on our mission statement, because it seems to be getting lost in our message. We at Westfield Senior Citizens Housing seek to provide a comfortable and safe living environment for all our residents. To this end, we are committed to providing special programs and supportive services for our elderly residents to promote and prolong their continued independence. We strive to foster positive self-esteem, integrity, and independence in the people we serve. We are committed to treating each individual resident with dignity and respect. We believe in careful growth, which responds to current situations, anticipates the challenges of the future, and maintains our history of commitment to competency, sensitivity, and compassion. We encourage excellence in every aspect of this organization. We intend to approach the future with vision and creativity, meeting each new challenge by exceeding the norms rather than merely adapting to the status quo. We fulfill our responsibility to our residents and the community by combining sound fiscal management with the highest quality of services available to meet the needs of our adults. We are proud of our development history and affordability, and we are committed to perpetuate our mission. The list of amenities that we provide are 24-hour maintenance, a parking, outdoor gazebo, exercise, library, community rooms, computer instructions, bus transportation to local shopping and events, greenhouse, gardening, and a shop at Boynton for household needs. We provide social workers on-site five days a week, information and referral to community resources, and provide a monthly educational informational program on various topics. In addition to congregate support services of daily dinner meals, monthly breakfast, monthly dinner, personal assistance, and housekeeping, and we have been awarded and recognized. The $20 million in funds the town continues to reference are federal funds specifically allocated to perform the mission and the purpose of the corporation, the development, management, and operation of affordable senior housing. They are not excess funds and do not exist as a source of revenue for the town. Specifically, these funds are earmarked for current and future operating costs, resident services, development, and I stress, development, and required capital improvements. As Chair of the Corporation's Buildings and Grounds Committee, I can attest to the significant cost of property, properly maintaining the buildings, something we are contractually and morally obligated to do. Unlike the mayor's portrayal of the corporation, both HUD and NJH MFA have held the two buildings, Westfield 1 and Westfield 2, as standards that the other affordable housing organizations and municipalities around the state and country should emulate. We have received a New Jersey Housing and Mortgage Agency Award for Excellence in Housing Management Award nine times since the year 2000, and we are proud of it and our executive director. The leases that are held are not typical. Most nonprofit affordable housing organizations around the state and country own the land, not lease it, yet they pay only a fraction of we currently pay annually to the town, which is $400,000. I'd like to focus on my specific committee and give you an idea of some of the costs that we are obligated to do. Let's start with what's required for our capital reserve fund. Building 1, we were required to have $1,500,000. This is in 2021. Building 2, $1,500,000, totaling $3 million, okay? Our capital needs assessment report, which we do every four years, to keep abreast of current charges on our, what our capital improvements will cost as a baseline only. The projected cost for these buildings, Building 1, is $8,016,000 over the next 10 to 20 years. Building 2, it's projected at $4,569,000 over the next 10 to 20 years. Now, why I'm telling you this is for a reason. Our present reserve funding is $90,000 for Building 1 and $104,000 for Building 2. However, our report, in order to meet our capital needs projection over the next 10 to 20 years, we have to start increasing this fund on Building 1 to $336,175 annually, and on Building 2, $199,351 annually. This totals $535,526 that we have got to put aside into this reserve fund to meet the needs of what is coming down the pipe for us. And I'd like to tell you that these repairs happen sooner than what's projected. My capital needs budget for 2022, as an example, it's a preliminary budget, because we're still waiting for some figures, is taken from the capital needs assessment report, which is baseline, and it is the bottom estimate, but it gives us a basis to start working from. On Building 1 is $1,291,000 so far, and on Building 2, $727,000 so far, totaling over $2,019,000. This is going into 2022 budget. Baseline numbers on the capital needs assessment reports do not include soft costs that are attributed to every project we do, which includes solicitation for bids, vetting bidders, qualifying the bidders, architects, engineers that have to prepare the plans where needed, and scopes of work. Project managers on the large-scale projects, permits, legal contracts, contingency of 10%, plus, because we are federally funded, we are required to follow the Davis Bacon Wage Scale required by HUD, which adds 7% to 8% to the labor cost because our contractors must be union. We can't use the cheapest guy if he does not comply with our compliance package. So, we are subjected to that which dries up our cost. And I didn't even talk about job change orders on old buildings. So, with the 10% contingency and the 8% on this budget, that's baseline, is over $360,000. This soft cost will cost us at least $500,000. So, if you're adding it up, we can account for $3 million going forward on our improvements plus a $3 million reserve fund, which needs to be increased, and our accountants and our financial committee intend to review this for 2022 with the new numbers. So, out of this $20 million that you think we have, we have to account for that, and we have to maintain these buildings, and we have to address quality-of-life issues on an emergency basis. Now, this budget does not include our routine budgets, because our executive director, the routine maintenance budget's handled by them, but it's still part of Buildings and Grounds, which is replacement of stoves, refrigerators, faucets, and minor apartment repairs. Building 1 has 172 units. It was built in 1976. However, it was built with bathtubs. So, as the apartments are vacant.
Just to let you know, you have a minute left.
Vacated, we have to replace that with showers that have safety bars and non-skip bottoms, because an 80- and 90-year-old cannot get out of a tub. It gives you a glimpse of what my budget is. I could continue, and I welcome any council member, you know, to sit with us, and we can go further, because this is only a glimpse of what we are obligated, contractually obligated to do. So, I'd like to thank you.
And could you give me your name again, please? I missed it at the beginning.
It's Rosemary Millett.
Address, please.
1020 Oak Lane, Plainfield, New Jersey.
How do you spell your last name, please?
M-I-L-L-E-T.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Anthony Somas.
My name is Anthony Somas. I've been a Westfield homeowner and taxpayer at 433 Birch Place for 38 years. I want to address the town's actions regarding the dispute with Westfield Senior Housing. My mother is a tenant at Westfield Senior Housing, so I've come to know the staff and other residents there. Westfield Senior Housing epitomizes what public housing should be. It is an excellently managed and maintained facility, providing safe, clean, affordable housing and support services to its residents. It would be a moral disgrace for anyone to do anything to interfere with that. It's my understanding that when Building Two was constructed in the mid-1990s, Westfield Senior Management requested a formal waiver of an increased rent since Building Two would be essentially a break-even operation for the foreseeable future, and thus, under the terms of the lease, no material rent would be due for that building anyway. The town never executed a formal waiver document, but after accepting the amounts being paid by Westfield Senior for almost a quarter century, the town has now reviewed the current lease, discovered that a formal waiver was never executed, and is now making a substantial claim for back rent. It is also refusing to renew the lease unless the renewal also includes a substantial increase over what has historically been paid. Additionally, it is threatening to replace the current Westfield Senior Management with one of the town's choosing, and it asserts that pulling millions of additional dollars out of Westfield Senior will somehow have no long-term adverse impact on the rents required of the residents. Even at the present amounts being paid, Westfield Senior is a financial windfall for the town. It provides over $400,000 a year to the town, costs the town virtually nothing in terms of out-of-pocket expenses to support it, and it's the primary source of the town's ability to meet its COA obligations. The town has survived just fine all these years on the amounts that it has been receiving from Westfield Senior. Now cynics looking at the town's actions might conclude that what's really going on is that after stirring up a hornet's nest of citizens' ire over the planned athletic field project at Edison School, including its exorbitant cost, dealing with criticism of recent financial deals with large developers, and spending down the town's budget surplus, the town has identified a politically weak constituency, seniors, and might be looking to replace Westfield Senior's management with individuals who will simply do the town's bidding, no questions asked, and utilize Westfield Senior as a pocketbook to fund the town's financial boondoggles at the expense of the seniors. To date, your actions have been a disgrace to yourselves and to the town. I urge you to prove the cynics wrong, drop your claim for back rents, renew the land lease for an amount consistent with what Westfield Senior has been paying all these years. It's our responsibility not to turn our backs on the town's seniors, but to instead ensure that they can age with the safety, peace of mind, and dignity they deserve. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Oh, wait, just go up higher. Thank you. Okay. Hi, my name is Chris Sinelli. I'm a resident at 292 South Place. I've lived in Westfield for six years, just about, and my wife was born and grew up in Westfield. I have two children, a nine and a six-year-old. They play tennis and soccer. And what I'd like to talk a bit about today is some of the independent financial analysis I've done around the scenarios for reconstruction of the Edison Fields, and fundamentally, some interesting, you know, areas where I'd like to explore with you, where I feel that certain construction options may have been overlooked in the ways of using natural grass athletic fields as opposed to building artificial turf. So what I'd like to do is share some of the analysis I've done. Nobody has asked me to do this analysis. I've volunteered my time. I'm quite passionate about the quality and the capacity of athletic fields today. I've had many practices that were canceled for my own sons, so I have a very vested interest, not only for my own family, but for the other youths in Westfield, to improve the overall field situation. I do feel, however, though, investing in yet another artificial turf field would be a mistake from a long- and short-term fiscal position. So I appeal today and thank you for your commitment to transparency and also for financial oversight and fiscal responsibility. So let's dig into some of my analysis. So I've spent some time looking at the plan for converting about 240,000 square feet of artificial turf and stadium lighting, and have built a bottom-up financial analysis which aims to show different construction options of natural grass turf as opposed to the current proposed plan of the artificial turf to be built at Edison. My analysis shows, and I have several parameters which I can show, today I'm going to be talking mostly about a type of construction called a sandcap field, and I'll go into a future slide what that kind of looks like. But the reason why I feel so strongly this should be more explored is because the cost is quite compelling. When you look at the construction of a natural grass field with a proper sandcap and drainage, it shows to be about 50% cheaper all-in, and after 10 years, that margin is still 39% cheaper than the artificial turf option, resulting in about the savings of $2.8 million over 10 years. Now, the other interesting thing about my analysis is that while I'm doing a bottom-up with comparisons to similar projects or proposals like at Hilltop or Glen Rock or Homedale, you know, the Edison budget itself for Spitzel was showing $9 million. So I think that it definitely is worth calling out here that the proposal that we have on hand for just the turf part, I'm not talking about the lighting or anything, is about 2.7 times higher than you would expect for a comparable bottom-up analysis of a like-for-like field. So if you go to the next slide, I show effectively the build and how the progression of costs occur for a natural grass-based field versus artificial turf. In the next slide, I'll show you a little bit about the different parameters that we use for the modeling, just so you can understand when I say "all-in" costs, what that really means. So the key findings really are, again, why is the Edison Field that renovation for turf? What constitutes that $9 million price tag? I think from a resident perspective, we haven't really seen the details there, and when we dig into very similar or comparable builds, it seems way out of line with what we'd expect. We know that artificial turf has a very expensive construction cost. There's no argument there. And we also know that it has a very expensive replacement and disposal cost. Not only does the whole field have to be torn up at approximately 10 years in, but there's an expensive replacement process, and the disposal of those toxic materials and carpet is non-trivial. It requires very expensive transportation and landfill costs in addition to the replacement. So in addition, I'd like to point out that artificial turf is commonly been cited to have virtually no maintenance cost, but that's not really true. I think that's a myth, and when you actually dig into the numbers and the types of maintenance that need to be done with artificial turf, whether it be seam tears or crumb rubber replacement every year, including regular watering and disinfecting, the maintenance is definitely cheaper than a grass-maintained field, but it's a non-trivial cost, and it definitely builds into that model and contributes to that $2.8 million delta after 10 years. So the next slide, I just want to talk a little bit about what we look at in our model. We've had the Hilltop comparisons to add that information, to enrich our model, and build that all-in view that I was talking about. So we look at things like the design costs, the insurance and bonding, in addition to the construction fees. We look at specialized equipment for both turf and grass fields, and the amortization of that equipment. We look at the all-in maintenance, whether it be labor or materials costs, obviously the construction and replacement, which we've also modeled for grass fields, a sod replacement at approximately every five years. And we know that our athletic fields really, truly do need an athletic field manager to help manage the capacity and utilization and rotation. With grass fields, they're all essential to keeping your grass fields healthy in addition to proper construction. But also today, artificial turf fields, we really, especially given our investments in Sidfay and Houlihan and Keller, we know that we should be doing more to manage our resources and assets today, whether it be having a better reservation system and tracking capacity, holding sports teams, to using the fields and not buying capacity in other towns when it's unnecessary. So I think in either scenario, a part-time athletic field manager or somebody taking that role would be important for turf as it is for grass, although we modeled a full-time employee for grass. Now, we didn't make up any of this stuff. I mean, the numbers and the research we get, a lot of it comes from the Sports Turf Managers' Association. We looked at actual field and proposal and designs from Michigan State University, North Scott Community High School. We looked at costs and disposal from the Massachusetts Toxic Use Reduction Institute. Oregon State University has a rich heritage in building these grass fields as well. Oregon, as we all know, has significant rainfall, significant clay, densely packed soils, much like we see here, so it's very relevant to the study, and other sources like Athletic Turf News and Safe Healthy Playing Fields Incorporated. So the next page, I talk a bit about the different construction types, and when we talk about field construction, I think that we know and we recognize the artificial turf construct that we've seen, you know, and the base layers and drainage that are required to build there. When it comes to natural field construction, one, you know, there are, again, many different options coming with very different price points. We've particularly modeled number two, the sandcap and drainage, to come up with the figures that I've cited earlier, but we have the ability, obviously the tool that I've built would help model all of these scenarios. It's important to say that none of our fields today in Westfield at all are constructed in any way like this, to include proper base layer and drainage. Each and every one of these options, regardless of the cost of materials, is a significant upgrade to the fields that we have today, including not only their playability, but also their durability and adding to capacity. The number-one reason why fields will prematurely lose grass cover is when they're drenched or saturated and played in or not allowed to recover, again, because of their condition and being drenched and saturated in rain. So drainage is very integral and grading to the sports, to building a usable and durable athletic field. The next slide, I want to talk a little bit about myths and fiction about grass fields. We hear it a lot. A lot of people say that natural grass fields can't sustain 400, 500, 600 hours. That's not the truth. Properly built athletic fields, like you see with some of the construction options there, they can be evaluated and rated for a range of capacity based on the use, their location, the type of rain they get. It's important to talk to a professional about what types of hours a field of a certain construction type can consume and/or sustain, and it's not unheard of to have grass athletic fields.
You have about 30 seconds left.
Okay. That can sustain 1,000 hours of use, of play a year, you know, and it's important with the drainage, you can build fields, you know, depending on the distance between the drain tubes and the base sand layer that's on top of it, is really a variable of how much rain they can sustain. So for example, a 12-inch sand zone and irrigation pipes that are 20 feet across can sustain five inches of rain per hour with no puddles after 30 minutes. So again, you know, that's pretty much, I'm going to skip to the conclusion, though, but so because I'm out of time. So the questions that we really have are, how come we haven't invested a lot of time in researching other natural grass options? Why does the Edison Project cost so much more than a bottom-up analysis of a similar type of construction in neighboring towns, not just nationwide, but very relevant to New Jersey? And how come we don't have more details about the $9 million proposal that Spitzel brought to the table that we can kind of benchmark that against like-for-like scenarios? I'm going to leave it there.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eric Elfstrom. I'm the president of Westfield Lacrosse, 62 Mohawk Trail here in Westfield. Thank you very much. It was a great presentation, and I love data, and I love realistic situations, and I'm representing about 800 families, a lot of soccer families as well. They have a board meeting tonight, so they could not show. And I was going to have some high school kids come up here today, too, because there's a couple of things about the Edison Project that needs to be said, too. As far as, I've heard a lot of the folks during these different sessions talk about the use of grass fields, and I would love grass fields, but there's just, the capacity does not allow us to do this. And behind Edison Field, where it's a Board of Ed shared field with the town of Westfield Rec, this is a big component because right now it gets dark at 4:45. I just shot lacrosse balls with my son at Houlihan right before I got here, among two teams on Sidfay, two teams, and this is soccer teams, two teams on Houlihan sharing this little field, showing the capacity issue that we have here. We are supposed to have, according to other towns in this area, upwards of seven artificial turf fields or some, it doesn't even need to be artificial, but if they have lights that you could play after 4:30. But I think the fact that artificial turf in this presentation was a good one, the capacity and where we live here in New Jersey is a problem with grass fields. There's not been one field here in my last 12 years, and I schedule all the fields for Westfield Lacrosse, so I know the capacity issues that we have in trying to fit not anyone else outside of Westfield. There's no outside towns going to Houlihan, Sidfay, I can assure you of that. We fight for 30-minute intervals on these fields. And I say this because, again, going back to the high school situation, is that this is a unique situation that is brought up in front of the REC Commission, that we have a joint appreciation for the high school students. I have a middle school student at Edison, I live not too far from there, that they have to walk across the street to Houlihan 90% of the time because the fields are a disaster, because it's wet, not because, you know, they're not properly constructed. I firmly believe if we spent the money in the back of that school, it would be destroyed, and the money would be flushed down the toilet in a short period of time because high school's going to use it right after school, and there will be no REC ability to use the field because there's no lights. And the other thing I'll comment that was brought up at the REC Commission that, and the young lady lost her husband unfortunately, was part of this very detailed analysis that they brought in front, they wanted the best of the best as far as athletic fields, right? That's why it costs maybe a little more than some of the other ones with direct lighting, so there is no ambient lighting. There's a lot in that, in that report that I looked at, that it is doing everything it's possible in its possible planning phase to avoid any runoff of the field into neighboring houses. I get it. If I live right around there, I would be very concerned about a haphazard artificial turf being put in there, but I believe they've done the due diligence around the type of field that's going to be put in there, and it will offer up, I think, a safe situation for kids to get in and out of there. And going to Sidfay and Houlihan, those of you guys have gone there, with four teams participating at 6:30 to 8, the transfer of kids being dropped off in a tiny parking lot, which is about an eighth of the size of the parking lot of Edison, we've done it for 10 years successfully. And I'm not saying that parking lot is good because it's not. I'd like that to be upgraded as well. But I will say, like, if we really... But I will say, like, if we really take a step back, right, we look at all of the families that are affected by improving the quality of the facilities in this town, and that is a well-put-together, smaller footprint of an athletic field that has lights that could be used to 9 o'clock in conjunction with the high school, that's a big deal. I've seen kids, everyone's seen the kids walking up from the high school to Temacque School to play a soccer game, and if you walk on Temacque School's field in the back there, it is a disaster. It does not represent Westfield well, when you're playing other towns in a high school game on that pathetic field. Now, could you upgrade the grass fields? Yes, but just seeing all of the athletics my kids play, there's very few grass fields that do not get time off, and that's the biggest thing. If we had time off on the grass fields, I would say, yes, let's do it. There is no way with the capacity issues that we have here in this town, that you could build a field back there and it would not be destroyed by high school and other people using the fields. I just, and turf, again, will, the maintenance of it, I've seen it at Sidfay Houlihan, it is used it every second of the day after 3 o'clock. And I say that, we're going to, we're going to have some high school kids come here in two weeks to share their, you know, embarrassment when they're walking up that hill, and I just feel, representing 800 parents from Westfield, they can't get here tonight because they're running after their kids, just like a lot of us are. I'm trying to represent the fact that we need to compromise, and we all know that we need another compromise. Like, I've been a proud resident here for a long time, but again, I want to bring people into this, into this, into Westfield and be proud of not only our teams that we put on the field, but also our facilities, and they need an upgrade. And I think this, we're 90% there, and hopefully we could get to the finish line. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Greg Limberg, 528 Grove Street, was not planning on speaking, but feel like I need to address the previous speaker. So, first of all, for the 17th time, to set the record straight on what the Branstad or Carroll benchmarking data says, it did not say that we needed seven new synthetic athletic fields. It absolutely did not say that. It said that we were 5.3 fields short of the benchmark average, and when you go down and look deeper into that data and that analysis, we are over-served with synthetic fields currently compared to the benchmark group, and we are therefore short grass fields. 5.3, not seven, okay? So, anybody is welcome to read the 521-page report from Branstad or Carroll that will demonstrate that those numbers are, in fact, accurate, and not that we need seven new synthetic fields. Okay, as to the current condition of our grass fields, I have no objection to what the previous speaker said. However, they are not athletic fields. They have never been designed or constructed as athletic fields. They are schoolyards, they are playgrounds, they are not athletic fields constructed in any way, shape, or form to the way that the speaker, two speakers ago, described, okay? So, there is no doubt in my mind, and this is my opinion versus the previous person's opinion, that grass fields can withstand a significantly more amount of playing time than they currently do. Drive around after 3 o'clock, look at every field in this town, and tell me how many of them you actually see in use. The answer is very few. Now, it's virtually zero, except for Houlihan and Sidfay and Keller. But even a few weeks ago, there were plenty of grass fields that were sitting empty during a time in soccer season where they could have been utilized, and they weren't. I don't know why, but they weren't. So, beyond that, don't take my opinion for whether or not grass fields can take more and be in better shape than the ones that we have in town. There are plenty of experts that myself and other residents have spoken to in New Jersey and elsewhere about how to maintain properly grass athletic fields, how to build them, how to maintain them. And they will certainly certify that the way these fields are built and maintained is far from optimal, and that without a turf manager, they're not going to be maintained properly, and, but there is every opportunity to make a different choice than the one that we're making at Edison. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
You can take off my mask. Good evening, Acting Mayor Havgood, members of the Town Council, Greg Casco, 434 Everson Place. I waited until tonight to come to this microphone regarding the Westfield Senior Housing issue. I'd been following it through the campaign, and it appeared to me that my own party, the GOP, was using it as somewhat of a fear-mongering tactic when it came time for mailers to be sent out. And we all know that during the campaign season, often there's things that are advertised that just don't pass that smell test. I sat quietly here at a couple of meetings and heard Mr. Sheehy from the Westfield Seniors approach the microphone and give us his side of the story regarding what's going on down there. And I know that the town has their hands tied. I know that there's litigation involved, and you can't answer questions, and I don't expect you to answer those questions here tonight. But, as you know, I like to dig into some things, and I started digging into this. And I started out with a simple statement that I saw in a local online news press release, and it said, quote, "According to its tax filing and audited financials, 1133 Boynton holds loans for 1129 totaling $5.2 million at a 3% interest, and over $14 million in loans to the village at Garwood at 0.25% interest." Now, in 2011, during lease negotiations with the town, then-board president Robert Conroy told the Westfield leader, "No money from Westfield will ever be used in Garwood." So, I did a little more research, you know, Google is great, you can just type in whatever you want, so I typed in Village at Garwood, and I came up with this. The Village at Garwood is a new senior housing project, this is from 2018, is a new senior housing project sponsored by the Westfield Senior Citizens Housing Corporation that provides 71 units of affordable one-bedroom apartments to eligible seniors. Again, online news, I guess the town is in the midst of lease renewal discussions initiated by the Westfield Senior Housing Corporation's board, and during those discussions, it was discovered that Westfield Senior has been misrepresenting what they owe and is in default on payments to the town since at least 1996, if not earlier. And they're talking about the Westfield Senior Housing Corporation owing at least $1.7 million to the town through 2019, and that's only for building number two. It's my understanding that there's over $20 million in assets, stocks and bonds, that Westfield Senior Corporation is currently holding. Now, I will be the first one to stand up for a Westfield Senior citizen. My father is 82. He doesn't live in Westfield anymore, but I have to constantly remind him, Dad, you know, no, you don't need an extended warranty on your car when you get that call. Don't renew your password when somebody sends you an email. There's a lot of scams out there. And I feel like our Westfield Seniors were being scammed during the election. And I, for one, want to let them know, as a resident in Westfield since 1972, witnessing that complex go up, servicing the residents as a police officer, you guys are important to this town, and the town is not looking, from what I can gather, to get over on them. It's the corporation that is being dealt with. I mean, rents aren't going to double, condos aren't getting built, but I think what needs to be discussed publicly, and it can't because of litigation, and I'm hoping to uncover some more stuff, hopefully Garwood is just as receptive as Westfield with Oprah requests, but I think some other facts and information need to get out to the public, and most importantly, to the residents at Westfield Senior. I'll be the first one to shovel your wall. I do it for a woman on Central Avenue for free every year, after she had the Hawk Light put in front of her house and a brand-new sidewalk. You people are important to us, and I can tell you, knowing this Town Council, knowing the governing body in Westfield for decades, they're not looking to get over on our Westfield Seniors. But if I'm renting an apartment, which I did on Summit Avenue when I first got married, and told my landlord that I'm not paying you rent, I think I'd have a bit of a problem. I think I'd be getting eviction notices after a while. So, if someone has been renting land in Westfield and not paying the rent owed, we need to look into that. And, again, I'm convinced that our Westfield Seniors will be taken care of. It's the corporation that the government's dealing with, not the individual seniors. I just, I felt I needed to say something. I wanted to wait till after the election. I probably will be back when I found out, when I find out some more information, but, again, as I always tell you when I leave this microphone, keep up the good work. I know that you all have, in our best interests in running this town, and I think you guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Jean?
Thank you. Jean Limberg, 528 Grove Street. I'm just coming up. I just want to remind all of you that when you're thinking about synthetic turf and you're thinking about grass, all of the points that were made this evening about the costs that the first gentleman made and then my husband made, there's another part of it, too, and that is the environment. And the gentlemen from lacrosse or soccer, or whatever sports league that was, want you to believe that the children of Westfield have to have synthetic turf, but that's a really short-sighted idea, because those children that are playing on synthetic turf now, in 10 years or so, they'll be gone. They'll graduate from high school, and they will go on to college, maybe they'll come back and live in Westfield, but the synthetic turf fields will be there. Once you put them down, once you rip up the grass, the natural grass, and put down the synthetic turf, that's it. You're stuck with it forever, because it's very difficult, once it's down, to replace it with natural grass, because you'd have to put soil down, it's a complicated process. So, I really hope that you will think about the health impacts of this, the long-term impact. I know that it's difficult to be a parent, my kids are grown up, and it, I remember driving them. My children played ultimate frisbee. We would drive an hour down to South Jersey where there were disc fields. And at the time, maybe it was a little bit inconvenient, but it's also a time when you get to be in the car with your child and other kids and have nice conversations, and guess what? Those 10 years go by in a heartbeat, and before you know it, they graduate, they graduate from college, and they go on with their lives. Please, really, think long and hard before you put this toxic plastic down in Westfield, and remember that Westfield has guiding principles about being green and environmentally sustainable, environmental stewardship. All nine of you really need to be environmental stewards. That's what we need in this community, not just in Westfield, we need it in the county, we need it at the state level, we need it federally, and we need it for the world. We have a responsibility to the kids here, but also all around the world. Please don't forget that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment tonight? Okay. I'll take a couple of minutes to respond. I would say if anyone has any questions or concerns about the Westfield Senior Housing Center, there's a lot of information that the town and this council have made available at westfieldnj.gov/WSHC, for Westfield Senior Housing Corporation. Please take a look at the information that's there. We've made a lot of financial reports that we've received available, we've made available, you know, all of the discussions and a lot of history, and I think you'll find a lot of facts on that page that might be helpful in answering any questions that you have after listening to some of the residents' comments tonight. If you have any questions after you review that information, we are always available to answer further questions. And then, thank you all who came to talk about the fields tonight. We appreciate the analysis and the facts and the passion, because it is a difficult decision, and we are, you know, in a process of trying to come up with the best solution. So, we appreciate all the comments and work and involvement that you have all brought to the table. So, with that, we are going to move on to the next part of the meeting. Councilman Parmley.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. I'd like to move bills and claims in the amount of $287,884.62.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. And now, we have reports of standing committees. Councilwoman Parmley, do you want to do the finance committee tonight?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Acting Mayor. I have 10 resolutions, nine of which I'd like to move in as a package. The first one's a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw a warrant for refund, to refund street-opening cash bond. The second's a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw a warrant for dog licenses for October 2021. Third is a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw a warrant for overpaid taxes for 2021. Fourth is a resolution authorizing the CFO to refund recreation department fees. The fifth is a resolution authorizing the CFO to return funds received from Westfield Hospitality Associates. The sixth is a resolution to appoint alternate council. The seventh is a resolution authorizing an award for contract for technical upgrades to the council chambers, which we're all excited about. Eighth is a resolution authorizing an award for contract for electrical upgrades to the council chambers. And ninth is a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw a warrant for risk management consultant fee.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mackey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
This motion is carried.
And then, next, I'd like to move a resolution authorizing the CFO to make budget transfers.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Contract. Any discussion? Could we please call the roll?
Councilwoman Havgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmley?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
The motion is carried. Next is Code Review and Town Property Committee. Councilman Parmley?
Thank you.
Your duty tonight?
Yes, I'd like to move a resolution to approve an open-air lot license.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman LaGrippo. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried.
Next, I'd like to move Special Ordinance Number 2224, on first reading, a special ordinance authorizing the sale of town property known as 2011 Boynton Avenue in the town of Westfield.
May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mackey. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Havgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmley?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Contract?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
This motion is carried. The last is the Public Works Committee. Councilman Contract?
Thank you, Acting Mayor. I have two resolutions that I'd like to move as a package. One is a resolution authorizing an award of contract for curbside collection of recyclable material, and the second is a resolution authorizing an award of contract for the disposal of that recyclable material. This would take place for 2022.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman LaGrippo. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Opposed? The motion is carried. May I have a motion to adjourn?
It's all moved.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mackey.
She introduced her.
Oh, first, right. Second. All in favor?
Yes.
This, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job.